Good evening and welcome to Roseville City Council's regular meeting of August 6, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask our clerk to please read the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Here.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Haldeshelt is excused. Next, we'll go with Councilmember Mandanza.
Here.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Here.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Here. Thank you. I'd like to request our Parks, Recreation, and Library Director Jill Geller to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Carmen, would you please announce the meeting procedures?
Yes. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Roseville City Council meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or on our city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council and not to any staff members or the audience itself. All speakers must be from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For items that are not listed on the agenda, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item not listed on tonight's agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our City Council. Public comment is limited to 25 minutes, and each speaker will have three minutes to express their comments. If the time limitation is reached in the first segment, individuals will have a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting just prior to council comments. The Brown Act does prohibit our City Council from discussing, debating, or taking action on items that are not listed on the agenda. The Brown Act also allows for public to comment on all items that are listed on the agenda. Speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item being considered tonight. Time will be monitored, and once the red light begins to blink at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. The City Council encourages public participation and requests that you please be courteous and respectful during the meeting. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, thank you for your civic participation, and welcome to the City of Roseville.
Thank you. Now it's time for a public comment. We will take comments from anyone about any item that's not on the agenda. Do we have anyone tonight that would like to make a comment on any item? You can come forward to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Glenda Hay. I live on Alta Vista Avenue in historic Sierra Vista. I've lived there for over 30 years. We have a new problem with some coyotes that are coming into the community in broad daylight. We have coexisted with wildlife for decades. We live with the Roseville High School green belt, the high-voltage power line green belts, Sierra Vista Country Club, or Sierra View Country Club, the Cemetery Lands. We've got skunks and raccoons and possums and turkeys, and the coyotes have always been there, but something new has happened. Nature is out of balance. We can coexist when there is balance, but currently, no one's happy. The neighborhood's not happy. The coyotes are coming into our neighborhood in broad daylight, intimidating people. We're having cats and other pets missing. The coyotes are obviously not hungry because hunting in the neighborhood, especially in broad daylight, is outside their comfort zone. And so I have called the county trapper and left him a message with a complaint. This is the first time, you know, in all these years that this has happened. We did put a notice on our Sierra Vista neighborhood site, and a neighbor neighbor commented, "We were walking down the alleyway behind Alta Vista and saw a large coyote staring at us. I yelled and ran after it, but it left, but not right away. It stood there staring at us. It was my daughter walking, her baby in a stroller, my eight-year-old grandson, and myself." I've got another neighbor here to speak. This is just something new. Again, we've coexisted for years. Something's out of balance. I've called the county trapper. The issue has persisted, so now I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Debbie from Sierra Vista as well. As Glenda mentioned, we've got some neighbors that are a little bit fearful. They have the coyotes. I have screenshots from them on my Ring camera. I'm on Yosemite. They come out in broad daylight in the morning hours when people are out jogging and walking before work, and also in the evening times when they get off of work. And there are several neighbors who've commented to me stating they will no longer walk their little dogs anymore because of the fear of the coyotes attacking them. I grew up out in rural Granite Bay back in the 70s, which back then was still unincorporated Roseville. We had coyotes everywhere. However, back then, we kept our dog outside in an unfenced yard, and we had cats in the neighborhood, but they never disappeared. So as we, as we as humans encroach on their land and take their land from them, we should have some sort of a plan in place when we come across their den to remove them and give them a better home instead of having them move and be dispersed and displaced and have to go somewhere else into neighborhoods to look for food.
Thank you for your, both of you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else tonight that would like to make a comment on any item that's not on the agenda? Now would be your time to come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Chapman. Comment tonight is just about the notifications that go out from the Planning Department, these postcards. And the particular situation that I had was I received one on August 4. It said it was post-dated July 23, but anyway, there was a deadline on here to request a public hearing August 1. And, you know, Planning Department basically says they have no control over the post office, which I'm sure is true. And so, you know, the solution to that is, you know, two things. Primarily, it's an email notification system, which they say that they aren't legally required to provide. And number two, they don't have a system. I know there's other jurisdictions that have email notification systems. You know, it is, you know, public is directed to go to the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhood Associations because those notices are posted there. So that means they are being emailed to some webmaster, you know, and so there's some group of people that are getting these notices when they come out timely. I mean, in this case, I wouldn't have known for this project what, you know, neighborhood it was in. You know, some of the things I look at might be watershed-based or, you know, kind of something to which I wouldn't necessarily know what neighborhood to be looking in. And so I'd have to look at all 20 neighborhoods every day to catch notices potentially. Anyway, you kind of see what I'm saying. So I would really request that you look into how, I know that GovDelivery is one email system. There's many email database-type systems. You know, it's actually a wonderful thing. People can subscribe and unsubscribe, and you can actually even typically then get customer sort of feedback on who's interested in what and type of thing. So anyway, that was one thing. And I'll just say from, you know, again, the terraces at Roseville, there's just another neighbor who couldn't be here tonight brought up Kirby Creek. And again, I know I've mentioned how it's very clogged with non-native vegetation and sediment buildup and trash. You know, there's actually some encampment activity nearby along the creek. And apparently, there's FEMA money. It's on the radar of public works that this creek needs to be cleared out for flood management reasons because not having water flow is a potential flood problem. We're in the 100-year flood plain. So again, Kirby Creek needs restoration, and I believe there's, I know it's listed on a project somewhere, and I believe there's even funding for it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? We'll also have one at the end of the meeting, too. Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close public comment, and we'll move into the consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered routine in nature and approved by one motion of the City Council. An item may be pulled for further discussion from any member of our City Council staff or public. At this time, no request to pull an item from consent has been made by either the City Council members or staff. Is there any member of the public that would like to pull an item from consent for further discussion tonight? Ms. Chapman?
Item 7, Emergency Operation Plan.
Thank you. Okay, the record will reflect that item 7 has been requested. Anyone else from the public would like to request an item? With that, Mayor, tonight, the City Council will consider consent calendar items 1 through 6 and 8 through 27. May I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 7 has been requested by a member of the public. Item 7 is an emergency operation plan update.
Hi, thank you, Jennifer Chapman, again. And I just want to say it's called an emergency operations plan, and there's almost nothing operational in it at all. The main operational thing is identifying the location of two EOCs, emergency operation centers, but most of that text in there is boilerplate that would apply to basically any community in California, you know, or, you know, subsets regionally based on some of the regional resources it talks about. You know, as a member of the public looking for, you know, some concept of what is the operational plan, there's nothing about, you know, evacuation, you know, which is typically one of the main things that public would look for. Unfortunately, there's not even an inclusion of the Roseville Coalition of Neighborhoods Association map, which is obviously a lot of work has gone into dividing up the city into all those neighborhoods and appreciate that. And I'm sure that is somewhere part of the plan, but it's not included at all. It's not identified or mentioned. And, you know, so again, new residents and obviously the city is always a growing population, you know, wouldn't see that in there. And I know there's more than about neighborhood organization that, you know, kind of plays into the emergency operations plan. And then just the other comment I'll make is it does talk about exercises that are done. And I know there is scenario planning that goes on, and, you know, to my knowledge, you know, the emergency operations folks primarily fire, but, you know, they'll talk about how they do scenarios about the terraces of Roseville often. But to my knowledge, they've never included the terraces of Roseville itself. And as an example, just an example of something that would be really helpful is, and we have a resident that is in a scooter, a mobilized wheelchair scooter all the time, and he has volunteered to be the person that tests out, you know, going down the stairways when the elevators don't work, to actually test this out. I mean, people that are in that situation have no idea, you know, what they're supposed to do or how it's going to feel or what it's going to look like. But that's just an example of a very operational thing that could happen that isn't mentioned. And, you know, again, it might not be something that would be that level of detail in that plan, but I guess my point is that there's not very much operational in that plan. And if there's time, unless there's some critical deadline, I guess I would encourage you to look at including a little bit more of real operations information into the operations plan. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Public comment?
Ask for the motion.
Okay. We don't need a public comment?
Okay, sorry.
Do we need a public comment? So we'll open this up to public comment. This is item number seven. Does anyone want to comment on it? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back for a motion.
Okay, thank you. On item number seven, the City Council will consider the recommendation to adopt the 2025 City of Roseville Emergency Operation Plan. I can have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we will move into a presentation. We have item 28, Villages at Sierra Vista Community Facilities District Number 1, Series 2025 Bond Issuance. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Bernascony, council members. I'm Scott Pettingill, Finance Director for the city. And joining me tonight is Janine Thrash, our Management Analyst overseeing CFDs in the city. And this evening, we are providing an overview of our recommendation regarding the 2025 bond issuance for the Villages at Sierra Vista CFD, Community Facilities District Number 1. So for some background, the purpose of establishing a CFD is to create a land-secured financing tool to fund the construction of authorized facilities as well as services. This particular district was formed in May, May 2 of 2018, and since then, five series of bonds have been issued. And the current outstanding par amount is about $39.4 million. The issuance will be the six series of bonds with an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6.7 million for this 2025 bond series. For reference, the district's maximum authorized indebtedness is $310 million. The authorized facilities that can be financed with these bonds are showed on this slide, and they include transportation improvements such as Earl Russ Drive, formerly Frederico Drive, Margaret Street, Fittyment Road, Centucci Boulevard, and Nicole G. Drive, as well as utility infrastructure and park and open space improvements. This next slide has a map that shows all the boundaries that will be secured by the bonds, including both the original formation area and all subsequent annexations. And the most recent annexation, Annexation Number 5, also known as FD 8, is shown here in purple off to the left-hand side of this map. So our recommendation tonight is to recommend that council approve the resolution, authorize the issuance of bonds for the Villages at Sierra Vista CFD Number 1, along with the related actions and documents, including the preliminary official statement, which will be used to market the bonds. And this concludes our presentation. Both Janine and I are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does council have any questions of staff before we open it up to public comment? No, we're all good. Okay. I'll open this up to public comment. Would anyone like to comment on this item? Now would be your time. Okay, seen then, we'll close public comment. Does council have any further discussion? If not, we'll hear a motion.
Thank you. On item number 28, the City Council will consider the recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 25268, authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Roseville Villages at Sierra Vista Community Facility District Number 1, Public Facilities, approving and directing the execution of Supplemental Agreement Number 5 to the Fiscal Agent Agreement, approving the form of the preliminary official statement, approving the sale of such bonds pursuant to a bond purchase agreement, and approving other related documents and actions. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandanza.
Yes.
Councilmember Rakucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, the next item we have before us is item 29, City Council Chambers Renovation and Addition Project Contract Purchase Agreement. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bernascony and members of the council. My name is Jason Sheikowsky, and I am your Public Works Director. With me tonight, I have James Krimko. He's our Facility Services Division Manager. He joined the city about a year ago and has been leading that group over that time. It's our pleasure to share with you tonight some information regarding the proposed Council Chambers renovation project and to request your approval to move forward with construction. To provide more details, I'm going to turn the presentation over to James. James?
Thank you, Jason, and good evening. The City of Roseville's Facility Services Division conducts annual audits on all municipal buildings to assess related, items related to safety, accessibility, and functional use. Through a joint review with the Police Department, the city identified the Council Chambers as a priority for rehabilitation due to its aging infrastructure, security limitations, and evolving space requirements. A comprehensive space assessment was revealed that the current configuration no longer meets, adequately meets the city's staff or the increasing number of residents attending public meetings. This project aims to address those challenges while enhancing the long-term functionality and safety of the facility. The city engaged an architectural firm to develop multiple design solutions that address both current and future needs. After careful evaluation, the city management selected the option that provides the best value while remaining cost-effective. The project consisted, excuse me, is estimated at $2.9 million. This includes two distinct phases, rehabilitation of the existing chambers and construction of a new lobby, construction of a staff conference room. The projects will be executing using funds from the public educational governmental access or PEG funds and the public facilities funds. These funding sources will ensure the project proceeds without additional financial burden to residents. Key components of the project include a new lobby construction designed to approve public access, building security, and with additional seating for high-attendance meetings. A new staff conference room includes dedicated space for closed-section council meetings and daily use for staff. The Council Chambers rehabilitation includes installation of energy-efficient LED lighting, upgraded seating, new flooring and paint, ADA upgrades, and significant security enhancements. The exterior construction is scheduled to begin on September 2, 2025, with interior rehabilitation commence in mid-October of 2025. The estimated completion is April of 2026, with weather permitting. The construction on the interior of the Council Chambers will begin in mid-October. The Council Chambers will be unusable for a period of six months due to construction. Staff is currently considering alternative locations. Some of the criteria we are considering for the alternate locations include proximity to downtown, ease of access, security, capacity, and audiovisual and broadcasting capabilities. Locations being considered range from conference rooms around the downtown civic center area to the corporation yards in the libraries. The final location will be shared with the public by early September and at least 30 days in advance to closure of the chambers.
Thank you, James. So in summary, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing a contract purchase agreement with Z Squared Builders as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the City Council Chambers renovation and addition project, and also authorize the city manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Roseville and approve a change order authority of up to 15% of the project costs as a construction contingency. And that concludes our presentation, and James and I are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does the council have any questions of staff before we go to public comment?
No, not right now.
Do public comment. Does anyone want to comment on this item? Now would be your time to come forward.
Hi, Jennifer Chapman. I am a little shocked. I, I really, this is supposedly going through an exemption because it's a minor alteration. It's, you know, this was the first time that these graphics were not available with the agenda packet. It's still not entirely clear, but, you know, if it is supposed to accommodate this so-called extreme demand, which there's no data for this demand, seems like there's lots of space tonight. It does seem like it would be not a minor alteration. It doesn't sound like a minor alteration. You're talking about, I think, a significant alteration, but, so I don't see how it's a notice of exemption or how it's an exemption for SEQA. I also, you know, in the notes, it's talking about how this is how it was when the building was first used for this purpose, and the population has since doubled, you know, but it's not clear if we're talking about doubling the capacity of the seating. It was just demonstrated that there is some overflow space available. What's being called the alternative space could be an overflow space. I don't know what these high-demand meetings were. These are the shortest city council meetings I've ever been to. I don't know what a high-profile topic might be. I would like to hear when you've really maxed out the capacity of this building. And, you know, the amount, the price tag is pretty high, you know, I mean, and I know this built, this city has a lot of money and has a big surplus. But, you know, again, you know, when public is asking for things, I mean, I hear public asking for things, you know, for which, you know, it sounds like money is a constraint, then it seems like, you know, and I understand there's sources of funds, but, you know, like in our case, you know, things for traffic modification, you know, that are being, you know, stated that, you know, there's no funds for traffic modification on Sunrise near a senior facility. It seems like maybe these sources of funds might apply to that. I don't know. Anyway, there's no data for the demand concept, you know, again, there's an alternative location demonstrated for overflow. I'm sure there are some renovations needed, but it's not clear that this is a minor alteration. And I just think that all of those things need to be demonstrated better. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to the council. Any questions of the council?
Then maybe just a comment because we've gone to all the meetings that we've had here. We've had it really full. And to have the opportunity to have more public come in and sit down is important. It's important to keep communications going, and also a place for staff could maybe be in the back. And if they didn't, if they had questions of staff, they could come out and we could have spaces. But I've been here when they even put the City Council Chambers were here. They were across the street. So it's gone through a lot of changes because our population has changed, and a lot of people come in, and we need to be, make sure that we have facilities for them, and also it's a safe facility for them to be here and safe for us and have that safety component also. So I'm, I'm looking forward to having the changes.
Any other comments? I appreciate the visuals. I, I think our safety is paramount, and I think that that has been a gap with us with this facility. You know, the detectors are here sometimes, but not all the times and not at our other meetings that we have when our other boards and commissions are here. I think it's important to note that this isn't just a facility that, or a room that is used for council meetings. It's every other commission and board meeting that we have, particularly when we are in the fall and school session, this, and any sort of controversial topic, any sort of retirement, we run out a room in this room. So I appreciate that. And our closed-session room is almost like a broom closet to the fact that this has accommodations not just for the council, but for our staff and our public. I appreciate the fact that no general funds are being spent on this. Just keep us posted. I know you will as things go along. And as far as the other facilities that we have in place, there's really nothing that would be sustainable for us. Am I filling out long-term for our safety and all the needs that we have? So I think you did a lot with the budget that you have, so. Any other comments? Okay. We'll hear a motion.
Number 25-261, approving a contract purchase agreement by and between the City of Roseville and Two Squared Builders, Inc., doing business as Two Squared Construction, and authorize the city manager to execute it on behalf of the City of Roseville. With that, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Albert.
Yes.
Councilor Madonza.
Yep.
Councilmember Rucucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you both.
Just to clarify, I believe that's Z Squared Construction?
Z Squared.
Z Squared. What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. Z Squared, sorry about that.
Two in there.
Okay, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda. We have a second public comment for anyone who would like to make a comment on any item that's not on the agenda, now's your time. If there's no one, we'll close public comment and bring it back to our staff and council for any final comments.
I have nothing.
Former city attorney, nothing?
No further reports, Mayor, thank you.
City manager? Okay. Does anyone want to kick us off?
I can kick off.
All right.
Just a couple things. I know a couple of us, a few of us were out on Saturday for our Moose Lodge's 100th anniversary, and Carnegie Museum has an exhibit, kind of has the legacy of the Moose Lodge over the 100 years, and so we did a ribbon cutting out there, it was fun to see the community come out, and I don't, I don't know how long that will be on display. Pauline, you might know, but...
It'll be a while, I don't have an exact time, but I know the Moose is celebrating every day this week with breakfast and lunches and, and another ribbon cutting, and, but normally, they keep their displays for, you know, a few months. It could be longer than that, but...
And I know, I think all of us were out last night at National Night Out, so it was fun to tag along with a consortium of our police, our fire. We, on the team I was on, we had Toast, which is the new service dog for our DAs, and so it was fun to see the reception that he got, probably more than anyone, out in the community. But it was, it was a fun night out, and it was a little cooler than some of the past National Nights Out, although a little warmer than last week. And I just want to shout out in excitement when I was reading the council packet, I know a lot of things kind of get embedded in the consent agenda, but out on the west side where, where I live and where many community, like a lot of houses are being built, cell coverage is a problem, so I'm really excited to see that, that we have a new agreement with Verizon for another cell tower out on the west side. I know I'm not alone in probably that appreciation. That's all I've got.
Okay, excellent. Mr. Madonza?
Oh, great.
Rucucci, the one of you?
Go ahead, Tracy. In addition to what Vice Mayor Albert mentioned, I had the opportunity to join several of our council members at the 25th anniversary of the Galleria Mall. They had a nice reception out there, and if you missed it, they are doing it every Friday through the month of August. They've got a nice little setup at the square outside of the J.C. Penney's there, where they usually have the Easter Bunny and Santa and all of those fun holiday figures. So I would encourage you to go out there. They have a little card you take around, kind of like a, like a bingo card, if you will, to the different shops, and then you can answer to win prizes and things like that. So it's, it's really good to showcase our businesses in there, and gives you an opportunity to see some of the stores that you might not have seen. And then, I think, everybody else will probably cover it, but that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Just a couple of things. I think Tracy and I both had the opportunity to go with Karen, and we were at the 100th anniversary date for the Moose. It was really nice. There was, had tons of people, and a lot of those people, the Moose people, have been Moose's for over 20 to 25 years, so they've really helped, and they help the community and do a lot of public works and how, and work with other organizations to help our community, so it was really nice. We all, many of us, I think all of us here, we went to the volunteers for the City of Roseville, they had a luncheon for them, and honored them for the years of dedication, and there were some that were new high school kids that are volunteering, and there were some that were over 21 and 22 years volunteering in different areas. So it was nice to, to see them and to give recognition to them, because that's really what the city is, it's about people and people helping people, and that was, that was really nice. I, this morning, I came back from a water meeting with Northern California Water Association. We went to Yuba City, and we're, it's a Yuba Water Agency, and they had a new building that they built. They do water and, and hydro, and this was their hydroelectric facility for their, for their employees there, and got to learn a little bit more about their system, and then some of the leading issues that were occurring here with the state level for all of us here in water. So it was, it was a, it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Okay, lots going on, right? A couple things to note, maybe that haven't been said yet, but I do want to agree with you on the volunteer luncheon, and the individuals and residents who live in our city who give back, you know, thousands of hours, they had so much pride from the police department, our fire department, Mido, so we're really appreciative of them. You mentioned National Night Out, want to thank our first responders. I made three stops in Sun City last night in Blue Oaks Park, and they were all really thankful for our first responders, and just overall, very happy residents. I've been a part of the leadership class for the Roseville Chamber interviews. They, we've been interviewing candidates, of course, there's more candidates than there are slots. The class will be announced the week of August 22nd, and as you know, we have a new Chamber exec on board. I look forward to meeting her, I think Dom and I have a meeting with her on Monday, so I would like to welcome Ananda to the Chamber and to the city. I will be at Sun City again tomorrow morning to swear in the new board members of their Board of Directors, so that's always enjoyable. And then, I know a number of us will be next week at the Grants Commission meeting when they hear some of the funding decisions. The state-of-the-city planning is underway, it is planned for August 27th, breakfast that the chamber's putting together from 7:00 to 9:00, or 8:45, and then my comments will begin around 9:00 a.m. There'll be some great surprises, and I understand that, I think there are about 400 people that are registered so far, so looking forward to that. The next meeting is August 20th. I will be out of town. Our vice mayor will preside over the meeting, and I just want to wish everyone a very safe back to school tomorrow. I know a number of our districts are starting, and I know our police and fire are active with the enforcement of our, the scooters that are, we're hearing so much about from the community, are the illegal scooters. We just wish everyone is very safe on their way to school tomorrow, so. Unless anyone has any other comments, I will adjourn us till the August 20th meeting. Thank you all for being here.